Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to call the regular, September 23rd, 2021, regular meeting of the enlarged city school district of Middletown to order. I'm going to ask first that we be led in the pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Blumenau. Following that, I ask you to please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mister, if you could remain standing for just a moment, Mister Perino, please.
Thank you. Thank you, President. The first moment of silence this evening is for Louise Traver, outstanding mathematics teacher at the high school for over 20 years. She not only taught students in her classes, she invited students to her home and tutor them in geometry, trigonometry, and algebra, enabling them to pass the regions. Louise also served her community. She was a volunteer in a manacating first aid corps for over 50 years. She also volunteered in the Witsboro Library, and she also was a, helped with the local fire department. So Louise, a very wonderful person. I served on committees with Louise, and she was very focused on these committees. The second moment of silence this evening is for Charles Newkirk Jr. Mister Newkirk, the father-in-law of Bill Kilcoyne, and Bill Kilcoyne has been a very respected member of our Buildings and Grounds crew for over 20 years. Mister Newkirk graduated from Middletown High School in 1951. He was very active in school affairs, in sports, in the student council. He's also served his country. He was a member of the Air Force in the Korean War, served the community, among his community services, he was a member of the Elks for many years, and in this position, he served on the Elks Scholarship and Education Committee, which greatly benefited our community. Also, please remember Suzanne Driscoll's father, Anthony Gustala, and Sue Short's mother, Patricia Short, Maureen Patricia Short, in your prayers. Suzanne Driscoll, of course, is the principal of Maple Hill Elementary School, and Mrs. Short is the principal of this building, Presidential Park. So again, gone but not forgotten. Thank you so much.
Can I ask everyone to still remain standing for just one more moment? I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge a tragedy that has happened locally. Many of you are aware in the news of a tragic stabbing in Arlington, one of our neighboring schools across the river, but still one of our neighbors. And so, we want to take this opportunity to remember Coran Smith, who was a junior at Arlington High School, who lost his life too early. It hits home when our children are lost. And so, I want to take this opportunity to wish his family Godspeed there in our thoughts and in our prayers as they go through this tragedy, and may none of us ever have to experience that. Thank you. Thank you. Mission statement of the enlarged city school district of Middletown, Mister Freddie Williams.
Good evening. We strive to provide physically sound educational, education opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our top-first student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Mrs. Clark.
Here.
Here.
Mister Gomez.
Here.
Mrs. Houston.
Here.
Mister Perino.
Here.
Mister Tobiasin.
Here.
Mister Freddie Williams.
Here.
Pastor Williams.
Here.
Mister Mitchell Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for the approval of our agenda tonight.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Now entertain a motion for the approval of our regular meetings minutes from our September 2nd, 2021 meeting.
So move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Just before we move on, I would like to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank all of you here that have been praying for me, keeping me in your concerns, for those of you who might not be aware, my absence the last few weeks, five weeks ago to this date, I suffered a mild, mild heart attack, and it took the wind out of me for a bit. And while I'm still under doctor's care, I thought it was important to be here tonight. And so, I do appreciate all of the phone calls, all of those that checked, checked in on me, all of you that were keeping me in your thoughts and your prayers. I am doing, I am doing better than I was, and I will continue to do better and come back stronger than ever. So keep my family. My family has stuck by me the whole time and took very good care of me for that. I am very grateful. So I just wanted to express that, express my gratitude. That's why, if you haven't seen me the last couple, the last five weeks, that's why I haven't been here. And I know that the, that the board was respecting my privacy as to what was happening, but it's not a secret. It's not a secret. So thank you. Moving on, personnel action items. If there's no objection, I'd like to combine Personnel Memorandum 7A instructional and Personnel Memorandum 7B non-instructional. I'd like to combine them together, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Moving on to recognitions, announcements, and community reports. Why don't I start down at the, at the, at the end of the table with Mister Freddie Williams?
How you doing? Been blessed to start a flag football program that's gonna start and roll out in the spring through the Middletown District from grades three through 10. The younger kids can get involved, and older kids can get involved anyway, it's just the general consensus of the, of the ages. So that's gonna roll out in the spring. I sat with a few people from the district, so we're gonna get that going inclusive, and we will be doing fundraisers to make it a free program for all the kids, which I think is great. And also, there is, this Saturday, I believe, starting at 6:30, the Middletown Police Department is presenting movie night downtown in Festival Square. Starts 6:30, and the movie starts at 7:30. I believe they're showing the movie Moana. So that's good family fun, too, for the community, and that's what I got for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mister Mitchell Williams.
I just wanna, you hear me? Just take this time just to acknowledge different things that we're gonna be doing that I'm very excited about, that we're gonna do in the Middletown community. So I want to acknowledge that It Takes a Village team, because of a few different things coming up. The first thing, one of the first things is, we want to acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month, which is from September 15th to October 15th. We're gonna be doing something. The It Takes a Village team is made up of Freddie Williams, Anthony Williams, Yaya Williams, Omar Perez, Chief John, as well as John Merchant, as well as, and that's just the core team. Everybody else in the community that wants to get involved can always get involved. But our thing is to unite everyone, as far as with the community, with the school district, with the police, everyone, just for the families of Middletown, and I'm very excited about it. So we have something coming up from that. The next thing that we're involved in, as well, is this tailgating thing that we're very excited about, and I just want to thank the school district, Dave Coats for adding on with us with that, as well as Amy Creedon for sitting at the table, It Takes a Village, all of us together. Because that's how this thing is supposed to work, all of us together, for the benefit of our family and the betterment of our kids. So we're excited about that. Please, everyone come out to that, the chair of the football team on, before they leave, and we're gonna drive out and get that bell back. All right? The next thing is, is something that Freddie Williams had brought up last week when he's talking about the importance of transparency. And it seems like sometimes people doesn't know, don't know what our responsibility is, and I'm all about transparency and I'm all about accountability, because no one is above accountability. So I wanted to put this up on screen, and I wanted to read the responsibility of the school board, as well as the superintendent, and how it relates. So it says, "The school board decides what, the superintendent decides how. The school board requests information, the superintendent seeks and provides information. The school board considers issues, the superintendent provides recommendations. The school board creates, reviews, and adopts policy, the superintendent recommends and carries out policy. The school board approves and reviews plans, the superintendent implements plans. The school board monitors progress, the superintendent reports progress. The school board contracts with personnel, the superintendent supervises hiring and process practices. The school board approves evaluation and criteria and procedures, the superintendent supervises and evaluates personnel. The school board approves and reviews budget, the superintendent formulates the budget. The school board represents the public interest, the superintendent acts in the public interest." That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Blumenau.
Thank you. That was great. I couldn't have said it better myself. I have nothing, I just, I know this is like our first week of full school, so I hope everything is going well, and I know that we're moving into open houses, Open House Week, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about that, as I don't have children in the school, but I've been seeing some, some positive posts about the, that interaction. Some of them are online this week, or have been going on this week, and I hope that those are going well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Crescendo.
Thank you. I don't have a lot, but we're, we were supposed to start a review of the Twin Towers project, but that, they'll talk about that later. We need more consultation with the architects, so that'll be next week, and it's a really exciting project that's coming. Also, out the window here, the playground's coming together for the older students from this building, and I just hope everybody's enjoying the fall weather, and when it stops raining, it's, it's gonna be really, really nice. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Houston.
So, first of all, I want to say that I'm looking forward to the pep rally. I'm hoping the weather holds up tomorrow. Last week's football game was like the beautiful weather, we only caught the tail end, my husband and I, but there is tomorrow's Golden Grads, the class reunion, I believe it's class reunion of 1970, that's the year I was born, so. But, and I hope my, my speech tonight doesn't ruffle any feathers, it's not my intention, but I, I always say the truth. This week, a member of our Board of Education decided to attend a City of Middletown public meeting and spoke on behalf of our board preemptively as to the hiring process for our superintendent using the pronoun "we" multiple times with regard to actions that are going to be taken by our board. Just for the record, this evening, as a board member, I wish to say that the hiring process for our new superintendent has not yet been collectively voted upon as a board, and this action, in my opinion, was a little out of line. No offense. Per my conversation with our school district attorney this afternoon, there are multiple paths for our Board of Education to take with regard to this hiring process. It is our right to conduct this search without outside help from an agency that will cost our district a lot of money, if that is what is decided upon by the majority. If certain board members wish to speak at public meetings, they have every right to, however, they should not be making decisions on their own and announcing them before the appropriate time. Also, this board member spoke out about his own personal feelings as to our administration. I wish to clarify that these feelings were his feelings, they weren't necessarily, I'm not saying they weren't, but representative of everyone's here. It is important that when a board member speaks, he or she is distinguishing between his or her own perspective, instead of speaking for the Board of Education as a whole. And I know we have liaisons, and I know sometimes this particular member does fill in for that role, however, "we" isn't always okay with "me" when it may or may not reflect. Our Board of Education members said that each of us should bring a list of qualities, which I like this idea, which we would like to see in a leader in an upcoming workshop. Last week, I sent a letter to all of my fellow colleagues that said the following. "After attentively listening to the many constituents of our community who attended our last Board of Education meeting, and reading the numerous letters, and really hearing what they have to say," here I am, losing my place again. I think it is safe to conclude that they are rightfully expecting the community, or the Board of Ed, excuse me, wanting to look for the following qualities from all of us elected leaders and paid administration. Number one, humility and leadership, which right now seems to be the most important one. Number two, for us to listen to them with open hearts and minds without censorship. Number three, for careful unbiased consideration of their asks. Four, truth. Five, transparency. Six, accountability. Seven, fairness. Eight, improved communication. Nine, uncompromised people in positions of leadership. And 10, integrity, which of course, numbers one through nine are part of. It's funny how life works, because last night I was at a class, and without prior knowledge, the class ended up focusing on the desirable qualities of an excellent, excellent leader, so I'm gonna have to add to my list. Number 11, humility, that's number one again. Number 12, gentleness with strength to opposition when necessary. 13, someone who is led through, through heart by truth and word. 14, someone who has an awareness of the needs of the many and the needs of the few. 15, someone who is reassuring. 16, protectiveness. 17, trustworthiness. 18, fearlessness. 19, a person who is sensitive to the suffering of others. 20, a wise individual. 21, someone who is discerning. 22, someone who is led by fire but not consumed by it. And 23, finally, fairness. Speaking of fairness, I want to mention that several months ago, I mentioned in a public session that I had heard of a hiring practice that our district has been said to have used. I spoke with a concerned constituent today who wants to remain anonymous, who had been denied a position by our district because of one grade over 20 years ago on her college transcript. It is said that our district turns away all applications in which the applicant has a grade lower than a B on their college transcript, even if the grade was over 20 years ago. And the person may have, have been a freshman, young, from a fatherless home, poverty, or any other situation that may have delayed them realizing their full potential as a college freshman. For the record, I do not agree with this practice, which is not a policy to my knowledge. I think, I think of my own situation. I once took golf to fulfill a physical education requirement. I was a chubby little ballerina, so phys ed, as much as I want it to be, isn't my forte, but I try. The golf instructor was not a golfer, in fact, he was an award-winning Olympic bobsledder. But the point is that I earned a C in his class, and that was because I didn't take his class very seriously. So in conclusion, I hope that Middletown would not have dismissed me for a grade like this if I had been the applicant. This is just food for thought. Just wanted to say my feelings, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I'm gonna need to address that, if you don't mind. I'm going to address that.
We'll, we'll come back.
No, no. I'm the person that Ms. Houston is speaking of, I'm the liaison for the Board of Education to the Common Council. And, you know, when Ms. Houston starts her thing with, "I'm gonna ruffle some feathers", you know, you're into maybe some misinformation, and so, what I did at the Common Council meeting was, and by the way, let me preface this with, Mister Perino and I are the only persons on this board who have ever done a superintendent search. It's an incredibly complicated procedure, it's time-consuming. The, Mister Del Maro, we didn't need a superintendent search, we decided he was the person for the job. So with that in mind, I went to the Common Council, and I use the word "we" because I do speak for the Board of Education, Ms. Houston, I'm sorry, and...
You don't...
What, excuse me? Excuse me? No.
Let's, let's, let's move, let's move. We don't need, we don't need to do this.
So I'll be, I'll be polite.
Listen.
I explained...
Point of order, point of order. We can hold this, we can hold this discussion. I appreciate the, the need to respond, we can reserve this for, we reserve this for roundtable. This is, this, this particular point, this particular point, we are in community announcements, recognitions, community announcements, and community reports. I prefer that we move on and stay within the framework of what our, what our agenda says, and then we can come back and we can address this at another, at another time, another time. Thank you. Mister Gomez, any community reports at this time?
Thank you, Mister. Thank you, Mister President. This past Saturday, the Middletown marching band had the opportunity to go to Syracuse University for, I believe, the football games. And next week, next weekend, they will be going to the San Gennaro Festival in Little Italy, which is also part of Chinatown. And you really have to admire our young people. They have, they have to be here about 3 o'clock in the morning. I know that because I'm one of the dads that help bring the kids over or pick them up late, almost at 8:00 PM. And the same energy that they have at 3:00 in the morning, they can't wait to be there, is the same energy they bring back. And I would like, at some, at some point, that we could have them come to the board, let me play for them. I think they might have in the past, because the enthusiasm, the love they have for their school, the way they represent the community proud is something worthy of recognition. And I know that my dear friend, colleague Mitch mentioned, I think, "It takes a village to learn Hispanic heritage." Just for the record, the king of, of, what do you call it, the March Band King, who was, who is the father of many of the patriotic march songs, John Philip Sousa, was of Portuguese heritage. It's a little known fact, I think, and they're an inspiration for so many. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Gomez. Mister Perino.
Thank you, President Williams. The first is an announcement from Middletown Humane Society sponsoring a rabies clinic this coming Saturday at 1:30 to 2:30. And if you want additional information, there's some rules you have to follow, the dogs must be leased, cats must be in carriers, people must wear a mask, please call 361-1861. That's a good, that's an excellent organization. Doctor Kelly Hewlett is going to be the, the VM in charge of the rabies clinic, and it's very low cost, $15 for rabies and $15 for December. So again, more information, call them up, 361-1861, they're great to talk to. Continuing on for a moment, there seems to be a little confusion. Read an article in the paper concerning bilingual administrators in the district. We have more than one bilingual administrator in this district. I made a list, and, and I may be off a little bit, because I did not get the list of names as I requested, but I made this up, I sort of made this from memory. So here it goes, and I may be missing something here and there. Demis Karabala, Elizabeth Rodriguez, Omar Perez, Katrina Acevedo, Ashley Merchant, Julie Dominguez Post, Alyssa Schreiner, Yaya Whaley-Williams, and Nagla Elska. So these are some of the administrators who are bilingual in our district. I just wanted to clear this up. Also, we have an award winner here with us tonight, it's Lenny Zapka. He's the director of our security, and he received the 2021 District Utica National Safety Excellence Award, and the titanium level, which is the highest honor that is achievable. And you know, it's no easy task to do this, there's a huge booklet, and there's over 300 questions in this, and you have to present documentation. And I'd just like to read the, read the accolade here. "We are in receipt of the enlarged city school district's Middletown submission for the Utica National 2021 School Safety Excellence Program. Congratulations on achieving at the titanium with honors level and being the first-time recipient of this award." Then it goes on to thank, thank the department for their time and effort. So thank you, Lenny, and thank you, members of the Safety and Security Department. It's a, it's a great honor. Continuing for a moment.
Congratulations, Lenny.
Food Service Department, we can, we can put that up now. Fresh fruit and vegetable initiative. Elementary homeroom classrooms receive fresh fruit and vegetables. Each Tuesday and Thursday, a box containing up to 24 pieces of fruit or vegetables will be distributed. Items, items can be enjoyed by all members of the classroom, and, and the adults are also encouraged to be a role model. And this is gonna continue through June, no cost to the district, money obtained from a grant from New York State. Very quickly, shout out to Dan Higby and his staff, they've been able to keep the buses rolling, not an easy task, because there's a, a local and nationwide shortage of bus drivers. So, good job, Dan. Continuing on for a moment, I want to give a shout out to all members of the Twin Towers staff who participated in the capital improvement program. I've been attending the meetings, and the meetings were great, and they've come up with some excellent suggestions, which are gonna be incorporated into the project. Finally, our NJRO TC unit has been very active over the past couple weeks. They, for example, were at the, they did a cleanup on Wisner Avenue and Carpenter Avenue, and also, they appeared at the Veterans Stand Down on the Elks, and they presented the colors, and I heard nothing but good comments about these individuals. So I could go on, but I've taken enough time, and we can move on from there.
Thank you, Mister Perino.
Continue with roundtable.
Mister Bison.
I'm going to remove my mask, I think we're, I just want to bring to attention that really tonight, a Middletown... A Middletown High School student, Andrew Stevens, was supposed to be here to talk to us about Child's Cancer Month. As many of you know, Andrew was diagnosed with cancer while he was still a student I guess I, I get a little emotional when I speak about Andrew, but I can tell you that from elementary school until his present day now in high school, he's been a fighter. To say that he's beat all odds, he certainly has. I call Andrew a warrior, because there isn't anything that Andrew wouldn't do to promote the cause. Andrew was hoping, as I said, to be... promote the cause. Andrew was hoping, as I said, to be here tonight, because he wanted to urge all of the Middletown schools to go gold next Thursday, 9:30, which is the last day for the Awareness for Children's Cancer Month. I'm hoping that all of us can really show our support and go gold on Thursday. And as you can all see, I have my shirt on, and on the back, I'm a member of Andrew's team, and I couldn't be prouder. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. I want to take a moment to acknowledge, uh, I think Mrs. Houston mentioned it just a few minutes ago, that on Saturday, Saturday will be the Golden Grad graduation acknowledgement for our class of 1970. Um, I, I take pride in talking about that for a second, because my sister Jessica, uh, was a 1970 graduate of, uh, Middletown High School. Uh, my, uh, my sister, Dolores, who passed away six years ago, was a 1971 graduate of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. Uh, I wish that I could be there on Saturday. I'm unable to, I'm unable to be there. Mrs. Houston, if you would do me a big favor, and, um, please make acknowledgement of that. Uh, my sister is currently, my sister is currently, um, recovering from a massive stroke, uh, that she had in, uh, May. And we are her care providers and going back and forth to Pittsburgh. And so, uh, I'm sure that she would want to, to celebrate. Uh, so I remember that and celebrate that. So we do want to recognize, there's so much good stuff that's going on here, all of the things that's happening. Uh, the, the Williams, the Williamses have, have, uh, have expressed so many things that are going on. Everybody's expressed things that are going on in there, and, uh, this is a, a fantastic community. And, and although sometimes we have, although sometimes we, we have, uh, I don't want to even say conflict, although sometimes we come, we, we run against each other on some subjects and some different things, uh, I tend to believe that this is the best community in the world. I have recently been offered, recently been offered a large congregation in the city of Chicago, uh, that, and when I say large, it's a very large congregation in the city, city of Chicago. And, um, oh, it's Friday night. I'm sorry, Golden Grad's is Friday night.
4:30.
At 4:30, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, but I turned down the offer, because this is my home, and this is my community, and each and every one of you, regardless of, regardless of anything, uh, we're one. And so my hope is, is that as we, as we move forward, as we move forward, we find a way to, once again, um, once again, come into a place where we can work together for the betterment of our entire community. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that tonight, the Golden Grad's, Mrs. Houston, uh, Friday night at 4:30, Friday night at 4:30, if you could. Um, and Mr. Perino, you'll be there as well. If you could please make the acknowledgement for my sister, Jessica Wilkes. Thank you.
Uh, let's move on. Back tonight, I need to vote to be for the approval of Financial Memorandum Number Seven.
So moved. It's been moved. I did turn on my mic, I'm sorry. Again, that is an approval of Financial Memorandum Number Seven. It's been moved by Mr. Gomez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, Mr. President?
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I, I think there was something on you, mathematics.
Am I correct on that? Is that something else?
Is this part of Financial Memorandum Number Seven? Yes.
Could you explain that program a little?
Could you please expound on that, please?
Yeah, it's a digital math program that the students, um, and educators get to use, and it's called Delta Math. And we had previously had
Yes.
... access to this resource, um, at a free preview rate, um, through the spring of last year. And this year purchased the product for educators in grades six through 12, and it provides them opportunities to expand their, um, resource selection, um, in their toolbox.
Is, is this the program that, uh, is this the program that was spoken about, uh, that we received an email on? And that's for what grades?
Six through 12.
Six through eight?
Six through 12.
Six through 12.
Six to 12. Well, I tell you, I'm gonna go for, I'm gonna vote yes on that program. And the reason I'm gonna vote yes on this program, I received the, the scores on, on grade six, I received from grade six to eight, and at the eighth grade level, uh, all students' proficiency is 12%. So we need something, very quickly, at seventh grade level, all students is 29%. At sixth grade level, all students, again, 29%. And as Bill Parcell said, "You are what your record says you are." So that's it, and I think we should make every effort. Um, I was, uh, I was criticized in an email, and I don't care about that, for, uh, for saying that, uh, for quote, attacking the math scores. No, I'm not attacking anybody. I don't believe it's the classroom teachers that at all are at fault. I think the students have to put more effort in. I mean, that's a bad word today, effort, I know that. You're not supposed to, you're not supposed to work, say that anymore, but I don't believe that. You have to put effort in to get results. And right now, I want to read something to you. Right now, the United States is ranked 31st in math literacy out of 79 countries, while China ranks first in mathematics proficiency. If you want good jobs, and I think this might be a good program, if it works, if you want good jobs in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, you have, better be not only proficient in mathematics, but proficient in reading and, and English language skills. So, uh, so there it is, and thank you for explaining that, uh, program. And you'll give us a result of how that's working, I take it, in the future. Thank you.
I think you skipped the superintendent's report.
Uh, no, actually, actually, um, actually, there is no superintendent's report tonight. It's been removed. If you look on your board docs, it's been, it's, it's been removed from the board docs. Thank you. Thank you, though, for noticing. Uh, so we've had, we've had the discussion, the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So passes. I entertain action item, uh, or approval for Special Services Memorandum Number Six, please. I have a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It so passes. Thank you. Uh, Action Item C, Approval of Change Orders. Motion, please.
So move.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think Mr. Bartlett.
Mr. Bartlett, if you could please.
Yes, we have five change orders tonight. The first is to provide labor and materials to reframe and install multiple IT junction box access panels into the ceilings and walls. Uh, the second is to provide tapered insulation in lieu of, of flat insulation at the roof canopy. The third is to modify the steel framing around the roof drains, drains. The fourth is to patch the pavement and the lower loop at the sewer line, um, sewer line repair. And the last is to provide electric for the new AC unit in rooms, Room S3. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. We've heard the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It so passes. Moving on to our opportunity to address, uh, the board. Uh, again, you can sign in at the desk. If, if you will, you'll receive the four minutes. You have four minutes, and, uh... I'm sorry. Let me say this again. Opportunity to address the board. Uh, there is a sheet at the, at the, at the podium that you, um, please sign, and, uh, and, and you'll see the clock is, is up for four minutes. You have four minutes.
There are other names before me here.
Invite you to the, to the podium. Come on, sir.
There are three people already signed, sir.
I'm sorry?
There are three names already on the list.
Okay, it, it's okay. They can still come. They can still come to the mic. They can still come to the mic, and it, it doesn't have to be in order. It's just important that your, uh, that your name is on there.
Okay, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Good evening, sir.
For the record, once again, Ray McNamara, Sr., 270 Pocatello Road. I'm a taxpayer in this school district. I've heard a lot of great things up here tonight. I've heard about being a community. I've heard about Team Andrew, of which I'm also a member, ROTC, a lot of people out there trying to get the word out about what we're doing and how we're doing it in relation to different things. One thing I'm not hearing, and I understand, ladies and gentlemen, that you are bound by executive session. I understand this. I personally am an elected official in a government agency, but my question is this. It has come to my attention that as of August 20th of this year, Albert Rivera was allowed to retire in spite of some serious allegations against him. While I know you can't answer that here and now, that's something I think most of us would like an answer on. How is that allowed to happen? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Whoever, uh, please.
Good evening. My name is Daisha Enriquez. I am the parent of the student that was assaulted off school grounds and reported the incidents in this district back in 2019. I am the parent that was never informed of the incident and was unable to provide the support she needed at the time. I am here so that the board identifies a face to the family that to the date, to this date, has not received a response from the district. In listening to many of the issues being brought to light by the community, it appears that the district's approach is that of no response is a response. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the members that responded, the board members that responded, with genuine concern. I'd like to acknowledge the bravery of the many women that have spoken up in regards to the incidents with the sexual harassment within our district. My, my presence here today is to remind the district that this family, to this date, has not received the response to the investigation that was lost, what was launched in my daughter's situation. In conclusion, I'd like to remind the board that the community is speaking and is demanding leadership that is fresh, uncompromised, and will help this community heal. The candidate should not be part of any investigations in which the district has been part of gaslighting. The candidate should reflect the qualities that Ms. Nicole Houston spoke of. We need fresh representation, and we need a community. We need community, and we need healing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Van Turpul. Um, this is my son, Matthias. He's five years old. He's a non, he's a non-verbal autistic child. Um, my husband works for one of the bus companies, and I, I understand there's a nationwide shortage and everything like that. And I, I try to be understanding. Um, about a week ago, for a whole consecutive week, um, my child is on the bus from 6:12 AM in the morning. His school day starts at 8:15. He's not arriving until 9:45. He's missing a large chunk of his day. It's not only him, it's three other children from the Middletown area. He lets out at 2:15. My son doesn't reach home every night until 6:00, sometimes 6:30. That's not my issue. He is special needs. He is put on a special bus with a monitor. As I said, my son is non-verbal. He was forced to sit on a bus for three and a half hours, and like I said, I'm trying to be understanding to the fact of the shortage. With an AC on high for three days in a row, to the point that every day he came home, his lips were blue. Because of his autism, he has sensory issues. He does not like clothes. The first thing he does when he enters our house is strip down to nothing. He was looking for clothes to put on because he was so cold. In the interim of that, my son developed a cold, which in turn, because of his symptoms, was out of school for an entire week. Because of his symptoms, he had to have a COVID test, which then in turn, my two other children missed school, because they too had to have a COVID test. Now, that's not even the half. When I went to the bus company, I was told, and they were well aware of who he is and what bus he's on, why didn't he open his mouth and say he was cold? When I explained to the woman that he was non-verbal, well, he still should have opened hi, his mouth and said something. I walked away. I went to Ms. Marconi's office in the Special Ed Department to voice my concern. A woman came out who was rushing me along and also said to me, "Why didn't your son open his mouth and say he was cold?" Now, to my understanding, the children going out of borough are only supposed to be on the bus for 115 minutes, two hours the most. I have the regulations. As I said, my husband works for one of the bus companies. Okay? So why is it, my son is freezing, he's missing a large chunk. Research shows the negative effect it has on a child. A child with autism or ADHD has to have a routine. His routine is being broken, that when he gets to school, it's difficult. And to my understanding, the school, as well as the three other parents, have made the district aware. Now, I've contacted, like I said, I went there, left my email, left my name. I would prefer if someone called me back and said, "I don't have an answer. I'm working on it. I'm looking into it." But to actually feel dismissed is worse. My son here has ADHD. He was pulled out of class the other day and sent into crisis counseling because another little girl had a meltdown. Said she was gonna blow up the school. That's to the degree of it was. And because his anxiety kicked in, he was removed from the classroom. And I was called. My kids cannot speak. I am their voice. All I am asking is for you to please do something. I get that this is our new norm, but he doesn't understand norm. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure you're all aware, um, of the issues we're having within the district. Obviously, we have some issues with the bus. Um, I've spoken to the bus company. It's not just those issues. Um, I'll start, start off by saying, my kindergartner went to school the first day. Um, in a very compromised household, I have brain aneurysms. She came home on the bus at 5:00 PM, in the middle of two other students, where I was told certain students are also on the floors. Um, we're bringing our kids to school, three to a seat, unvaccinated, and it's okay. And then we're putting them into the schools with, uh, monitors and masks and three to six feet of spacing, which isn't happening at all. So this is happening on her bus. On my bus, it's overcrowded. The school is saying, "No, we don't have any overcrowding. We have congestion." That is not congestion. When you're putting unvaccinated children, three to a seat, for over an hour, it's not okay. If either child on either side of my daughter contracts COVID-19 and is positive, if my daughter is only in between them for 14 minutes, you're not gonna call me. And that's what I've been told. That is not okay. It has to be 15 minutes, and it doesn't matter where you're sitting. Um, Dan Higby told me that specifically from the bus company. Um, I don't think that that's okay. There's a lot of really concerned parents out here. Um, we all There's a lot of really concerned parents out here. We all want our children in school, but only if you could provide a safe environment for them. We started a petition because all of the parents that are concerned are not getting help. I was told there's maybe roughly 20 parents that want remote. That's not the case. Ms. Creedon's holding a list of 184 known Middletown residents. She had asked a question. There's other signatures on the list from out of state. Some of those out of state people are our family members, our grandparents. Some of them are custody battles where dad lives in another state and mom lives here, and the child is in the Middletown District. So that's something that really needs to be looked into. Also, the addresses on there, they're old addresses from old emails. They're not accurate as to where they are. Most of those people are from Middletown District, and we're the parents that want an option to give our children remote because you cannot guarantee us that you're following the CDC-recommended guidelines. No one has been able to tell me that you can follow those guidelines, and I want to know why. The CDC recommends between six and three feet, if possible. So pretty much what the school district is telling me and my children from my high-risk family is that we can make it happen if we can make it happen, and then we're just gonna play Russian roulette with your children. That's not acceptable. I'm not accepting it. And then other parents are having CPS called on them because they're leaving their children home, because they care more about their children than following the school's rules. I don't understand why there's not an option for remote. I would like one person to tell me why these families cannot have remote. You have congestion. Wouldn't it clear up spaces in the classrooms, in the cafeterias? The congestion. There's herds of students going through one door in Twin Towers. Then where are they going? You know where they're going? They're going into the hallways before they're in their classes that are also congested. This isn't working. It can't just keep being brushed under the table. These are our children. This is our community, and it's gonna spread. I don't feel like anything's being done. Yes, we can find a way to clean in-between routes, possibly, maybe. We're working on congestion. What are we waiting for? What are we working on? If you're not gonna give us a remote, when are you gonna fix the problem? That's what I want to know. I am tired of fighting with the district to answer the phones, answer questions. Amy has been very helpful. But besides that, what is actually being done? Nothing. Nothing. At all.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Connie King Yones, and I have a student at Twin Towers. Beck and I have been partners through this whole thing, and we're trying to get the parents together and just help see what's really going on. So she basically, we knew we had four minutes, so she basically kind of covered everything. I guess she was motivated. So I'm just gonna, if some of it is repetitive, I apologize. So I'm aware of the COVID mandates. With that being said, after numerous phone calls and emails, I would like to know, do you not have the authority to enforce safety guidelines in the best interest of our children with the amount of congestion in our schools? For example, is a congestion of student not means for either remote or hybrid learning options to give parents the choice? How many cases does the school need to have before parents are notified of these cases? I'm not asking what is mandated. I'm asking the school's position. What is the number of cases the school needs before the district decides to go remote? Again, this is not political. I'm not asking about the mandates. I'm asking, what does the school think is fair for the students, staff, and parents to keep them safe?
Good evening, board members, educators, students, community members. My name is Shad St. Louis, and I'm the only Blackmail School Guidance Counselor within the school district. I have been a resident of Middletown for the past seven years, and I've been working at Middletown High School for a total of eight years. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." Or in this case, the silence of the people we elected to represent us. I recently came to the realization as to why I have been silent, and the reasons for this includes there has been a culture of intimidation, cronyism, bullying, fear, nepotism, racism, and discrimination within this district. This environment causes intelligent and capable people who do not conform to these toxic traits to think they are doing something wrong, while in fact, there's instead something gravely wrong with the system. So I'm breaking my silence publicly, not only to add to the testimonies of other staff and students who have come before this board to illustrate the injustices and wrongdoings of this system, but also to be strong for all of the students, past and present colleagues who can't come forward publicly for fear of retaliation or further trauma. I stand before you tonight to share my story. When I first got reinstated as a school guidance counselor at the high school back in 2015, I received treatment demonstrating systemic racism and have been falsely accused, targeted, spied on, intimidated, and set up with the intention to discourage or make me quit my job numerous times, most prominently during the 2015-16 school year, where monthly meetings were scheduled with the principal to discuss my performance. Here are a few examples. There was a meeting with principal and dean where I was accused of telling a student with disabilities she was unable to take a college course because she had an IEP. This was not what I told the student. I told her the course would not fit into her schedule due to the BOSIS program she was enrolled in. A simple conversation with the dean would have cleared this up. Instead, it was escalated to a meeting with the principal with a follow-up letter CC to personnel. When discussing a struggling student with a Hispanic last name, who I motivated by gifting him a $75 gift card from Walmart if he earned a 75 or above in each of his classes, the principal verbally stated and wrote, "Culturally, this student could sell the gift card and buy drugs with the money." As an educator of color, this felt to me like the principal was saying, "People of color are expected to be drug users and drug dealers," which is not right. The personnel director informed me they made a mistake hiring me, and they would contact two other white counselors who were ahead of me on a rehiring list. I was told I would be informed by December 1st, and if someone else was hired in my place, they would start in January when school opened. They never informed me about what they discovered to this day. My union representative will share a story how I was spied on by a secretary next. So why speak now? I felt I needed to share my story at this pivotal moment of time when the board is considering candidates for a new superintendent, so you can understand the importance of selecting community-building, unifying, and transformational leader as the next superintendent. I'm hopeful that under new leadership at the district level, the culture of intimidation, bullying, and systemic racism will cease to exist within the school district. I'm optimistic and hopeful that new district-level leaders will empower students, teachers, and community members to achieve our true potential and build bridges instead of walls. To conclude, I will quote Malcolm X, who said, "Truth is on the side of the oppressed. You are not to be so blind with patriotism that you can't face reality. Wrong is wrong, no matter who does it or says it. A person who stands for nothing will fall for anything." I hope that the Board of Education is learning to listen to the truth. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Superintendent, and you motivated group of concerned community members. The meeting Mr. St. Louis mentioned, I was asked to attend with him. It was the House Dean and the principal, and it concerned a matter of a student and a suspension. At the conclusion, Mr. St. Louis had presented to me earlier what had seemed to be in an inadvertent email from a House secretary that seemed to indicate the secretary was tracking Mr. St. Louis's movements during the day. I presented this fact to both the dean and principal, the dean expressing an incredulous nature there. We continue. We ask if the secretarial staff was tracking other staff or faculty members. Should we warn staff or faculty members? We were assured by the principal that the matter would be looked into. To my knowledge, there was never any follow-up to this report from the administration. My takeaway at the time was that the sessions for Mr. St. Louis were sort of a gotcha, rather than a sort of a punitive method to punish a subordinate, rather than to lead or nurture talent. And I worry that that punitive, this punitive atmosphere, well, I know it's extended in some cases to Mr. Perez and others, guidance, school psychologists, et cetera. So yeah, it was concerning at the time and very demoralizing Mr. St. Louis. I also want to thank at the time Mr. Williams and Ms. Houston for really presenting to the public duties and responsibilities and what is expected of the school board. One of our board members mentioned the article, I think he's referring to the September 16th issue for the Times-Daily Record, and echoing Mr. McNamara, I think Mr. Perez, they said, is one of the only bilingual administrators of color in the minority-dominated district. Our minority-dominated district, school officials have not yet responded to requests for confirmation on this. So the paragraph above this, though, and Ray McNamara brought it up already, Merchant was one of dozens of community members who attended a September 2nd school board meeting to show support for Black Administrator Omar Perez, who they said was transferred out of the high school after he reported sexual misconduct by a non-instructional district employee. I would hope that we'll receive a report in the press as to the results of this investigation, again, as to what did the superintendent know, and when did he know it? So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Maria Blon. I want to begin by thanking Nicole Houston for giving me hope that individuals can open their hearts and minds to truth and apologize when mistakes from the past are made. I'm not sure how many more stories will need to be shared for each and every board member to open their hearts and minds to the truth of what has been happening in this district for way too long. You've heard from my son-in-law, Shad St. Louis, and husband Tom Blon about the horrible way Shad has been treated in this district, starting in 2015. Quite honestly, I still don't know how Shad has been able to muster the courage to go to work each and every day. After hearing his stories, if you were in his place, would you have the strength of character to keep working in this district? I witnessed Shad day after day, holding his head up high, a big smile on his face as he helps students learn to believe in themselves, empowering them to succeed. The disrespect this fine young man experiences is heart-wrenching to witness. I have learned recently from him, he thought he had done something wrong and was the only person being targeted. During the last few years, as we have learned of other educators and students who have received similar, even worse, treatment, there is the realization of systemic racism problem in this district. I am honored to be trusted, as I have listened to stories from countless students and educators of color. I have boldly spoken up on their behalf when they weren't ready to share their stories publicly for fear of retaliation. We have spoken truth at many meetings, awaiting the time when people who have been disrespected so many times for so long now feel emboldened to speak their truth directly to the public. When I hear board members say we are harming morale by saying there's systemic racism in the district, I wonder if there has been any consideration about what it feels like for the students, educators, and staff members who have been experiencing this racism day after day after day, month after month after month, year after year after year? How do these students, educators, and staff continue to come to school, doing their best in this traumatic environment? As a white person, speaking up for people of color, I have been bullied, ignored, and silenced. I have never in my life been treated with such disrespect. I realize this kind of treatment is tragically familiar to people of color. To all of the courageous people attending and speaking, both indoors and outdoors, tonight and at the last meeting, muchas gracias. Merci en pleil. Merci beaucoup. Thank you very much. That's all the languages I know. We have spent a tremendous amount of time working on shifting the leadership culture in this district, not because this has been enjoyable, but because it is absolutely necessary. Up to this point, our alerts to problems have been discarded and ignored. These motivated gatherings of concerned community members who come to meeting after meeting after meeting would not be here now if attention and action had been taken more than a year ago. My greatest hope is this district will transform to be a place filled with truth and respect for each and every individual, focusing especially on students and educators of color, plus those with special needs. We want to work with the school board to bring the New York State Department of Education to fully investigate past and recent claims against the administration. These issues are too big to handle alone. Let's work as a team of board members, educators, students, parents, and community members. Thank you.
I am Bishop James Rollins, Sr. I live at 62 Bedford Avenue, right here in Middletown, New York. And let me just start by saying, first of all, in the spirit of transparency, I've got a problem coming out of the blocks. When I looked at the agenda, I don't understand, especially in the spirit of transparency, why there is no superintendent's report. While I'm looking at the clock and I realize the clock is there, I've been told that I've got to limit my comments to four minutes, and that there are no opportunities for anybody else to give their time. I don't see that in the guidelines. And I really have a problem with it, because if in the halls of Congress, they can actually yield some of their time to another person, I would think that we could certainly do it right here in the school board of Middletown. Having said that, I've got a problem, because I'm sitting here and I watch two board members who can't seem to get it together because the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. I look at, there are board members who didn't know that the superintendent's report was going to be skipped. And so I've got a real problem with it. I listened to one of our board members tell us that they don't know about the specific number of bilingual teachers, that it's made up. And I know John Perino, but that is unacceptable, sir. Don't make it up. All of these people are educators. If you don't know how many bilingual people are teachers or educators around our school district, say, "I don't know, but I will find out." Because at the end of the day, sir, if there are five, six, 10, 15 bilinguals, if they speak Mandarin and Russian, and the majority of the students are Spanish or another language, we still don't have any help. They may as well not be bilingual at all, just for the sake of... They may as well not be bilingual at all, just for the sake of saying that they're bilingual. And so, I've got a problem with that, and I wanted addressed. I've been, I teach on Thursday, so I didn't have an opportunity to be here, but I want to make sure. I've got a problem with the fact that we didn't get a superintendent's report, and we have a superintendent who has been allowed to retire under the guise of honor with a golden parachute, with the real intent to avoid the demand for resignation. That's what I'm looking at. And I'm not accepting it. I don't want to hear it. I don't need the excuses. I'm saying to you, just like it really is. I've listened to the other people talk, and I've heard them talk about the occurrences of systemic racism and why we need leadership that understands that. And that will be addressed in terms of my suggestion, that we look at promoting from within. But I digress, because when I think about the fact that there are those who actually support the banning of the teaching of critical race theory, because critical race theory suggests that there is no such thing as systemic racism, and yet I continually hear it over and over and over again. And we've got two board members sitting right here, who stood side by side with Colin Schmidt, that is Nicole Houston and Kevin Gomez, while he actually introduced a bill from the Assembly to ban the teaching of critical race theory, to address the issues of systemic racism. Let me say it to you, in case you want to stop me, systemic racism weaponizes the mind with bias that results in hatred in the oppressor and the oppressed, because neither will ever be free, according to the words of Nelson Mandela. And so, while I stand here, it seems like there are issues all over, and that some people are bitter, and yet some are saying they want to be better. Let me suggest to you, gentlemen and ladies, the only difference between bitter and better is I. That's the only difference. And so, as I stand here, you know, I've got a list of things that I want to address, because the cost of systemic racism are social, the cost of systemic racism are economic, the cost of systemic racism are cultural, and last but not least, academic. So, what I'm looking at, and I look at the fact that we've only got a few black administrators, men of color, and there have been opportunities, or should I say efforts, to actually displace or move them. I can tell you from standing right here, it is not going to happen on my watch. It is not going to happen. Not accepting it, and I will rally along with the grassroots efforts and every other resource that I can bring to bear to make sure that our children get the best A's education possible. I was at the forefront of changing the name of Mechanics Town School, in case some of you don't remember, to its current name of William Carter Elementary School, where my grandchildren attend. Only 40%, 40% of the community decided they didn't agree with it. But I just needed the 60, which is why the name is blazing across the school now, for a man who gave everything he had to ensure that our children were properly educated. I will yield to the time, but let me tell you something, we have quality talent in this district. I will call her name, Yaya Williams, I'll say it without reservation. I'll say it without reservation. You say to me, I hear you say, that there needs to be a national search, and that there are only two people that have the experience, and then you give me a caveat about the last one. Well, the last appointment of our superintendent, who now sits and will not give us a report tonight, for whatever reason, I need you to understand that that sets a precedent. Because the fact that he was not a part of the national search, you just moved him along, there are other incidents as well. We have this thing going on in the district called two-for-one, "I'm going to investigate", where people who come in, they come in at different levels, and it is an impediment to the successful recruitment of minority teachers in this school district. I am going to investigate it. Okay? It's coming. It is coming. And so, when I say to you, the things that have taken place, I've heard comments about sexual harassment, you know, and I'm telling you now, the knee-jerk reaction to a community that stands up and calls you to a place of accountability is unacceptable. Leadership is not a spectator sport. You got to be on the field, and you got to know what time it is and what's taking place. And I'm not seeing it. And so, I've waited, and I've taken this opportunity. You have someone going to the city council meeting? I understand that, that's fine. But to disrupt the flagship school that serves the most scholarly by removing one of only two black administrators in the district, who is also one black male who is Spanish-speaking, is a travesty. I'm not leaning down to the mic, because I don't need it. And so, I'm saying to you here and now, it is critically important, we pay taxes, so that as I saw in the chart, the org chart, I expect it to be carried out as it is outlined. If I stepped on your toes tonight, so be it. Pull your feet back, do the job, I will be the first one to pat you on the back, because at the end of the day, the kids are all I care about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name, my name is Adam Andre Torres De Rosa. I've worked at this district for 12 years. I am a Spanish teacher at the high school. I've written something, I want to share it, and I want you all, not the Board of Education, the public, the parents, the students, I want everybody to listen to what I'm about to say, all right? It is a crucial moment in the Middletown School District. With Mr. Delmore retiring, we find ourselves with an opportunity to create real change. District change will only come about if the next superintendent has organic community ties, has a connection with the teacher population, and has a progressive vision and the ability to achieve that vision. Our community has spoken at the last Board of Education meeting. Our community demands proper representation, meaning that they want to see someone black or brown, Latino, Latina, who genuinely understands our students' experiences and needs, and someone who is approachable, approachable to all. When looking at our pool of talent at the Middletown School District, there is one person who stands out from the rest, that is Mrs. Yaya Whaley Williams. Our current, our current coordinator of mathematics K through 12. Now, I've seen her at community events, that she has helped organize, where she leads and inspires with, as you said, humility, and naturally moves the participants. I've also seen her interact with students that get excited to see her and greet her with genuine love and affection, where her belief in being a lifelong learner verbally and innately passes onto them. Mrs. Whaley Williams has all of the necessary qualifications on paper to be the superintendent, yet she has proved to be more. She is connected with the students, the community, staff, and administration. Also of great importance, Mrs. Whaley Williams speaks Spanish. She is able to communicate with our large Spanish-speaking population. Roughly 60% of our population of students is Latino or Latina, with many parents and family members that do not speak English, many of whom do not feel comfortable communicating and being active within the district. Mrs. Whaley Williams has been in the field of education for the past 16 years, a teacher for nine years, and an administrator for seven years. Other districts have seen her potential. She was offered the Assistant Superintendent position at the Liberty Central School District. She was also a finalist for the Assistant Superintendent position at the Newburgh Enlarged City School District. Mrs. Whaley Williams also has a more personal attachment to the Middletown School District by having her two children attend the district. As a teacher that has been working at the Middletown School District for 12 years, who lives in Middletown, 90 Sprague Avenue, I have witnessed administrators come and go, and been seen and felt the need for real change. It is important that the community has a voice, and that teachers and school employees have a voice, without feeling they will be met with negative repercussions from administration. The times of administrators and employees being senselessly, senselessly shuffled around, without taking into consideration our schools' best options, need to end. The days of decisions being made that make no sense, need to end. The days of no comprehensive explanations that affect teachers and students, needs to end. The days of no transparency, needs to end. The days of a bully culture from someone of the, no, the days of a bully culture from some of the administrators, and you all know who you are, needs to end. It is time to pass the torch to new blood. It was decided, it was decided to keep the nominee for the superintendent position within the district when Dr. Eastwood retired and Mr. Delmore gained the position. Now, it's time for the superintendent position to be filled with someone from the district that will bring us to the next level, create a positive and proud school culture, and when considering our internal talent, I believe that person is Mrs. Yaya Whaley Williams. I have a thing that I wrote about humbleness, but you said it, so I appreciate that. That's my petition that I put out. I would love for parents, I would love for students to read it, so they can see it again, and I would like them to sign it, if their heart moves them to. This is the thing. Our students, they don't have some, they don't have the time. Our students don't have the time. Our students don't have the time to have someone lead them, who is trying, trying to understand them, and not even genuinely or naturally attempting to connect with them. We have someone here and now to bring them forward. Why would we hold our children back for some selfish individuals that don't want the best for our community and our students, but want the best for themselves? That is evident, because they know somebody can be more effective here at Middletown, and they don't step aside and allow for natural progression. Now, I want you guys to know, looking around, I'm the only, nah, looking around, I am the only teacher here. There was another one, Safar Newsom, but I'm the only teacher here. Ask yourselves why that is. You all know the answer. They're scared. They tell me they're scared. So are the parents, check that out. So, the board was addressed last time, at the last board meeting, and I'm going to stop after this, okay? The board was addressed at the last board meeting by numerous students, numerous parents, numerous community members, and those people had questions, and not one of those questions was answered tonight. Why is that? And that's the answer.
Is there anybody else? Anybody else tonight? I want to thank everybody for coming to the mic and speaking, speaking your heart and your passion, speaking your heart and passion. And we're hearing, we're hearing. We don't dialogue, and you all know that, we don't dialogue at all these meetings, but we're hearing, we hear you. I understand. Let's, let's move on to our committee reports, our committee reports, any committee reports tonight?
Yes, Pastor Williams, the Audit Committee is meeting on Wednesday.
Just for everybody, everyone that spoke tonight, everyone who spoke tonight, somebody will reach out to you. We're going to have somebody reach out to you. Your names, if your names are on the list, and you put the information there, we'll reach out.
I don't hold me to that, Pastor.
I'm sorry?
But I don't hold me to that.
Hold me to it. You have access to me all the time.
Well, Pastor, if you will excuse me, as I said, being bringing my children out tonight is throwing them off stage.
I understand.
So, I would stay, it was a feat, just to get them here.
No, I understand.
Especially him, so please excuse me. I will go home and watch the rest on my phone, as I always do, but I cannot attend.
There's no excuse necessary.
But not that I don't want to hear whatever you have to say, because what you have to say is important, because I'll be back.
No excuse necessary.
Okay, thank you.
No excuse necessary. Our committee reports, our committee reports, please.
On Wednesday evening, next Wednesday evening, September 29th, the Audit Committee will be meeting via Zoom at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Mr. Gomez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Fair Funding Committee met last week, earlier this week. We are planning, and I really would like, the parents are here, listen to this, we will be hosting a town hall for the district, and we're working on it, on how our school district, or how our New York school district's funded, where does the money come from? Of course, the taxpayers. But what are the different formulas in place, and how we, as a community, can ensure that we get the dollars that we rightfully own? Under the current New York State Foundation aid formula, our district has been owed repeatedly over $50 million, at least $50 million a year. In spite of that, we have thrived. But if you create a formula to narrow the gap, how is it that it curates a deficit to our children? So, I think it's important, we hopefully will do this at the high school, at a place for the community, and there will be more information out there, because I believe it's important that our parents, our it's important that our parents, our community, be informed how the finances of a district operate so that they could also be advocates for our children, our teachers, and for our taxpayers, okay? So stay tuned.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez, any other committee reports tonight? If not, we're gonna move on to roundtable, to roundtable. I'm gonna start down again at the, at the end of the table with Mr. Freddie Williams, please.
Good evening once again. I had a couple bullet points I missed with the community, community reports. Just wanted to reiterate, Middletown Youth Sports will be the program, also sponsored by Takes a Village. Held on school grounds and fields, this is flag football coached by Middletown staff members and Middletown district parents. All accountable, respectful people who have our best kids' interest at heart. This will roll out in the spring, and once again, with the special thanks to the Middletown Police Department for the movie night, special thanks to Chief Wanchu and the entire Middletown Police Department, and something else I had was concerning the situation we've been in, and we've been taking a lot of losses in the district. So I was always told by coaches and mentors that there's lessons in losses. So what we have to do is extract the lessons and the losses in order to move forward in a productive manner. So I think we really need to cite that, and as a board member, I look forward to continuing to do what is progressive, progressively, progressive and with integrity and complete Let us please take the community's concerns and issues with the highest regard. Without the community, there's no us, and that's what happened.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams?
Just like at our last board meeting, I'm just moved by the concerns of the community, our community, recognizing that the school district is in the community. I just think of the three things that I live by as commitment, responsibility, accountability. I made a pledge as a commitment, and I have the ability to respond, and it's only right that you hold us accountable. That's your responsibility in this. So keep it coming, and we're gonna keep working. I took this position knowing what it is, and I'm gonna do my best to represent this community. I'm not making friends, I'm just friendly, be clear, it's a difference. I know my job, and I'm gonna do it to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mrs. Blumenau?
Every opportunity that I get to sit in front of our community and listen to what they say is a learning experience for me. I pride myself on being a good listener, I also pride myself on being a lifelong learner. What has been said is that there are people that are afraid to come forward in this district, and that now, because there are, they have partners in this goal, that they are feeling stronger to come to this microphone and speak, and that's a good thing, but we are strong as well, and we are here to support our district, our families, our staff, our administration, and do it to the best of our ability. And I believe that every single person that is sitting at this table, myself, I can only speak for, but I believe that I'm sitting at a table who has only the best interest of this district at their heart. And we are making moves and we are taking action to find out what the talk is all about, right? We're, we're just hearing this. You say that this is, you know, we come to this microphone and we're sharing now, which is a good thing, but I've been in this district for nine years, at this table, as a, as a board member, as a leader, and these are, this, this is a lot of new information that's coming to us, and we are taking it seriously and we are moving really carefully forward with changes, and they will happen, but be our partners in this, don't be our enemies. I want to be a partner to this community, that I am a partner to this community, and I always have been. We are not the enemy. We want to work together, so let's work together. There are, there are lots of questions out there that need to be answered, and I want to, please, those that can make those answers officially, please make sure that our community gets the answers that they need so there is clarity and consistency, because what I'm feeling is that there is not, and if we can be nothing else, let's be transparent and let's be honest. So if there are things that need to be said, let's get to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blumenau. Mr. Chisenzo?
Thank you. I don't know, there's a whole bunch of things. It really, really troubles me that people say that they're afraid to come to the mic for retribution. I don't want to offend anybody, and it's only my opinion, I, I have a hard time understanding that concept, now whether it's a reality or not, I don't know, and if it is, we certainly will address it. One of the hallmarks of this Board of Education, this district of our country, is freedom of speech. We don't get to where we're going unless we have an open conversation. So I'll be very, very honest, there are times that I don't agree with what's being said, but I'm gonna listen, and I'll, I'll work with it, if, whatever I can do. A lot of times I do agree with it, and I hope that people do come to the mic in a respectful way. Today was a respectful meeting, and just, you know, it's your civic duty, this is your district, you own it, you pay taxes, and we, we as a Board of Education will always want what's best for you. And one of the hallmarks of this board, there are nine people here, and this is, this is my 11th year on the Board of Education, and this is probably the most diverse board I've ever been fortunate to work on, and through that diversity, we had a conversation in executive session, and those two gentlemen on the end there taught me quite a bit that I needed to know, and I appreciate that. So that being said, Pastor, you've been a mentor to me, and I'm gonna take the high road on this. So we are looking for, we will be looking for a new superintendent, and what we're gonna do is, the New York State School Boards Association is a entity that oversees, that helps the school districts, they're, they're an incredible, incredible resource, they do all kinds of things, and one of the things we're gonna take advantage of is their team leadership department. They're going to come down and spend four hours with us to learn about a superintendent search. It's a very, very, very complicated procedure, and it needs to be done correctly, and it's imperative, imperative, that every board member attend this meeting, it's four hours out of your life, it's something you're gonna learn, it's something you can keep with you. They're gonna be flexible, they're, they're offering a course even on Saturday, late afternoon, because we know people work after 5 o'clock. So we're in the process of doing that now, and hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have that date set up, and we'll keep you informed as much as we can. It's a process, there will be total transparency, total transparency, and one of the things that I know will happen is that there'll be community groups, there'll be focus groups, there'll be administrators from this school, teachers, PTO, there'll be business leaders, parents, we'll, we'll make those students, yes, thank you, we'll make those groups after the workshop. Total transparency, and they have a voice, and I won't go into the detail of how, because it's not exactly established yet, how the agency that we're gonna hire that's going to do the superintendent search, but all of that information will go to that person, and they'll share it with us. So I'm sitting here, I'm putting my reputation on the line, I enjoy this position, even though sometimes it's a little difficult, but we learn. I'm going on a, on a limb, or so to speak, that I guarantee that part of it, that it'll be totally transparent, you'll know what's going on every inch of the way, and we will come out with the superintendent that will work for this district and work for the students, work for the teachers, work for the community, and we will come out on top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. C. Mrs. Houston?
As I said at our last meeting, please do not take our silence as inaction. There's plenty of going, plenty of stuff going on behind the scenes, but we are forbidden to speak about it by law. Each one of us, as a Board of Ed member, has a vote as to, or with regard to the who, what, when, where, why, and how the process of the hiring of a new superintendent takes place. Sometimes we need to do things differently than we have in the past. I'm looking forward to this workshop, but the talent search, in my opinion, does not have to be complicated and complex. I agree with my board colleague when he mentioned total transparency and having much input on this decision from the community. I wanted to mention too that I believe that at some point, someone had mentioned a PhD being a requirement for a superintendent, I don't agree with that. Sometimes people are too busy doing the acting within a school district, working with families, doing, having the experience part rather than the schooling part of it, and I, I think that experience speaks as a form of education, so as a board member, I don't feel a PhD is a necessary requirement. I want to switch gears here to one of our, our speakers tonight from our community mentioned my position on CRT, Critical Race Theory. It is true, I have spoken out against it. I don't disagree or deny a problem that exists, I just think that I don't have the same opinion on the solution. That doesn't mean I don't think there's a problem, and I, if you want to see what I've said about it, please feel free to go look up the former board meetings where I spoke about it, the press conference I spoke at about it, I'm very transparent on that. And then finally, I want to speak tonight about another issue. I, I heard the passion of the moms, the distress in their voices tonight regarding mandates and meeting the requirements of the mandates that have been given to us, and I, I just, my compassion is huge for them. Nobody should have to endure what they have, their children have endured. As far as the mandates related to the COVID-19 virus, I have spoken with many parents on my own who are upset about the multiple things that are going on, on the different aspects of the issue, and to that I say, I, I cannot change mandates that are placed upon our school district by leaders of higher government positions, but I can express how I feel about it, and I believe the science is not being followed on everything. I think the data being put out by agencies and people of authority are incorrect in many cases, not all of it for sure, arbitrary and conflicting, yet we as a district have to abide by those mandates. I also believe that we have to follow rules, so if you see me not wearing this, it's, I have a medical reason, I've submitted that to our school district health professionals. I believe that I need to say something from the heart regarding the experimental COVID shot. Families are encouraged to do their own homework regarding this because the media and government are censoring the voices of many excellent doctors out there, including Dr. Luke Montagnier, you might want to grab a pen if you want to write any of these down, a Nobel Peace Prize winning virologist, Dr. Michael Yaden, the former head of Pfizer, or second in command of Pfizer, Dr. Simone Gold from America's Frontline Doctors, Dr. Ruth Norstrom, a national leader of women's health, Dr. Stephen Brooks, a knowledgeable doctor with a PhD in virology, including the many medical professionals that spoke out at last week's FDA panel review of the COVID vaccine, in which it said that you can fact-check this, by the way, for every one life saved by this vaccine, there are two lives that it kills. These are not my words, do your homework, check, fact-check me. These are the words of a medical professional who has treated many COVID patients at the FDA advisory panel. You won't find this information on mainstream media like NBC, CNN, CBS, MSNBC, or Fox, I'm not playing sides here, you have to go online using an alternate streamlining application such as Rumble or Telegram, because these important voices that have the right to be heard are being censored. I'm a proponent of free choice as a board member and as a citizen, and informed consent, not, oh, of course it's safe, kind of informed consent. I say to all of our families, only you know what is best for you and your children, and I encourage you to speak with your medical provider and do your own homework, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. President. By the way, you don't have to be a lawyer to sit on the Supreme Court, and you could be born in a law cabin to be president, okay? Likewise, I don't think a PhD, sometimes it's a lot, it should be the number one criteria, or a criteria. I just want to address a couple of issues that were brought today. First, I was very moved and of course upset by hearing the parent of the two special, of the little boys with special needs. I've already, I've conveyed to my colleagues how I feel about the leadership in Special Ed Department, and I, I for one believe that it's time for a change. I do want to address also another issue, an issue that my colleague, Mr. Perino, has, I think, brought up consistently, the importance of funding math programs. Recently, the state of Washington legislature passed a law, and the governor signed it, that lowered or eliminated, if I'm correct, the requirement that particularly minority children take math proficiency exams, because the tests are too hard. I find that, I'm not one who likes to use the race, blame racism, but definitely it's very paternalistic to say that children, because they're brown, Latino, African-American, that we have to lower the standards for them to succeed, that we have to dumb down education. And if you want me to prove how wrong they are in Washington, and I think it's legitimate that I raised that, because what happens in the West Coast tends to influence education paths in New York State, if you want to see how wrong, how disgustingly wrong that was, or is, here's the proof how they're wrong. It's called the Middletown School District, predominantly minority children, I turn on district, I don't like to use the word minority because I believe we should not be judged by the color of our skin, count of our character, but predominantly African-American and Latino children, 90% graduation rate. If you give our children the tools, the empowerment, especially at the lower grades, they could succeed and go very far, and that's the approach. I hope that New York State does not adopt what the state of Washington has done recently. And again, I commend my colleague for being a persistent voice, lifetime voice, John Perino, for raising, and I guess all my colleagues here, for raising and funding math programs, having a math coordinator at the local, lower level, because we have to start at the lower level, and that's very important, and, and I hope we follow that. Empowering our children, empowering our families, not lowering standards to give them the pass, okay? That's the wrong thing to do. And finally, I just want to echo what my colleague, Mr. Chisenzo, and I think Mrs. Blumenau, all my colleagues, Freddie, Mitch, have said, and Pastor, as I think, said many times, I think in the diversity of, the strength of this, of our board is the diversity of viewpoints. We have different viewpoints. Sometimes when we are in an exec session, we do duke it out. There are members of our board who are more conservative, like myself, and there are members who are maybe more liberal, but I believe that's important, because in diversity of viewpoints, all issues are taken into consideration. of viewpoints, all issues are taken into consideration. And that's what makes us stronger. That's what makes America stronger, government of consensus, not tyranny of a majority or tyranny of a minority, but people of different views coming together for what really matters, especially here, our children. And to conclude, I, okay, I allow one of the speakers as peremptory. To conclude, I always make a little prayer with my kids, especially the younger ones when I take them to school. It goes, Almighty God, we acknowledge our dependence ID. We pray you bless, we pray for your blessings and mercies upon us, our parents, our teachers, and our country. Coincidentally, that was the prayer that kids recite in the New York schools, and to the Supreme Court ruled against it. But I think in essence reflects my desires, or our collective desires here for our district, that our children and those who work here be blessed and be able to have, go on and look back with pride in the education they receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perino?
Thank you, Bishop Williams. You know, I wish Jim Rollins were here, because I'd like to say to him, he made some great points. I knew Bill Carter. Bill Carter was a friend. Bill Carter was a colleague. I worked with Bill Carter. I pushed as hard as anybody to get that school name from mechanics down to the William A. Carter School, and I was a lead resolution on that. So, Jim, if you're listening, I just thought I'd add my two cents on that. As far as the number of bilingual teachers in the district, no, I don't know that, but I'm sure Mrs. Crawford can give me an answer to that, and then we'll convey it to Mr. Williams. I don't have all the facts on everything. I have many facts on quite a few things, though. And I do know we have 48% of our administrators in this district are minority administrators, not 41%, as it was reported, 48%. Another item, it was alleged last meeting that the IEPs are being changed. This is alleged in 2018. The State Education Department came down, a letter from State Ed, and here's what they said. "New York State Education Department found no documentation that changes were made to any IEPs after the CPSE meeting was held." Again, "New York State Education Department found no documentation that changes were made to any IEPs after the CPSE meetings were held." So, there, that is. As far as systemic racism goes, I stand by my statements last week. Do I know what's in everybody's heart and every teacher in the district? No. But I judge it by the facts and figures of this district, who we are graduating, what universities, what trade schools they go to, and so on. Again, I agree to disagree with people who made that allegation. Likewise, it will be, Mr. Del Mar will soon be retiring from the district, and I'd like to congratulate him on the 35 years of service. I don't know if there's any high school students, I don't think we have any left here, but if you like your new media center, Mr. Del Mar, if you like your new café, Mr. Del Mar, if you liked 130 college credits being offered now, so it'll save you a lot of money, Mr. Del Mar co-led that program, two-year kindergarten, elementary grades, midpoint K to eight, transitional program, K to five, mastery program, Mr. Del Mar, K to eight, flipped and blended learning, on and on I could go. So, I don't think Mr. Del Mar's been given credit for the 35 years of service. He started as a principal in Truman Moon Building, then he went to Monhagen, then as an assistant superintendent, and then as a superintendent. So, I just want to wish Mr. Del Mar the best of luck, and congratulations. I could go on and on, but I think I'm down to nine seconds, and I try to respect, seven seconds, respect the clock. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bison?
First of all, I want to thank you for staying. Our audience is very thin, but right now, we have five, six people, seven people in the audience, so I do appreciate it. I respect what everybody has had to say at the microphone. However, on any personnel matter, this board is not able to discuss it until there is a resolution, and then it would be. The reason why, and nobody is saying it, the reason why the superintendent, there wasn't a superintendent's report, it was to be given this evening, however, we want to fine-tooth it, it had to do with the Twin Towers building and some plans. That is the only reason why it was pulled. I'm not going to go on. I think all of my board members have said the way we feel, we're in there, and as it's been said, we don't all agree. But we try to come out unified with a unified decision. Sometimes, some of us have to pull back a little and listen to what others have to say. Please know that we work with our hearts and souls for this district. It's hard to sit here and take some of the accusations, but we also have listened, we are looking, and there will be some conclusions. Lastly, I'm going to be, try to add on a happy note, please don't forget 9:30, next, next, 9:20, 9:30, next Thursday, the wear gold for Middletown and for my dear friend, Andrew Stevens. I don't know how the boy has endured what he has gone through in the last four or five years. I broke an ankle, and believe you, me, I really, it was an eye-opener. When I look at some of the old pictures that his mom has, and you see him laying in that bed, you see him in a fetal position, it's been amazing. And I also know what they go through every time, he has to go down for a scan. The fear will never leave them, but he is one of the strongest, and as I said, I call him a warrior. And I know what they've done for other children. Liz is taking $10 gift cards from Panera so that they can give them to some of the folks that are down there, the toys that he's brought to students there. I could go on and on. Is this what most 16- or 15-year-old kids think what he can give back? I'm so proud of Andrew, and hopefully, all of us will remember next Thursday to wear gold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. If you all don't mind, I'll just take my mask off for a second. Please excuse my, putting my head down. It's not meant as any disrespect, I'm not feeling well right now, and I'm fatiguing real fast. But I did want to express tonight, I do want to thank all of the speakers that came to the mic. One of the things that I've always said, and even last year, even last year, is that it's our job to sit here and to listen. We might not like the things that are, some of the things that are said, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say the things that are said. We might not like some of the things are said, but it's our job to sit here and listen. What I want to remind, you know, everybody is, is that when it comes to Board of Education meetings, a Board of Education meeting is not really a public meeting, it's a meeting that's held in public. And we, as a district, take the opportunity to have these moments that our public can come to the mic, because we sincerely want to hear your voices. So, that's why, that's why, that's why it's in place. And if I'm not mistaken, that opportunity was created by Dr. Paul Johnson at one time, when he, some years ago, sat on this board, and it has been, it has been something that has continued to this day. In respects to all of the different things that are happening, it's, and the different things, and the different things that have been said, it's important for us to address all of these issues. It's important for us, when we have parents that are having problems with their children, when we're having busing, when we're having issues with, with whatever it may be, when it's, when it's discussions of racism, it's important for us to address it. From day one of my being on this board, I have, I have come onto this board, and I've spoke about many of, many of the issues in relations to the African-American community. And I've encouraged many people, and I understand their apprehension, but I've encouraged many people to speak up. Your speaking up gives us the opportunity to be able to make change. But I sincerely believe in the process. I believe in learning how to make the process work for you. And so, with that being said, I, I'm grateful that everybody came. Somebody says something real quick, and I only have one minute, and I want to stay, I want to stay in it, stay within the timeframe. You know, I didn't cut, I didn't cut anybody off, because I wanted to, I wanted you to speak. And I know that maybe everybody doesn't want, doesn't like that, but I think it was necessary, and I'll take the heat for that. But here's the, here's the thing. There are many things that we would love to talk about, I'll be honest. I would love to sing soprano, alto, and tenor, but we're bound by law and some things that we cannot talk about, but it does not mean, as Mrs. Houston said, it's not being addressed. And, and, and what I ask, what I ask is, is that we allow the process to work so that we can get a successful conclusion, and that we be transparent, and we be forthcoming with information that we are able to share. The things that we can't share, it's unfortunate, but the things that we can, we need to share. And so, my time is done, but I needed, I needed to share that. Lastly, lastly, real quick, real quick, lastly. The superintendent's report tonight, as Mr. Bison stated just a few minutes ago, the superintendent's report was to include a layout of capital project for Twin Towers, so that we can begin to bring Twin Towers into a place of equity with our other schools. It is one of our oldest buildings. That presentation will be at our next meeting, because we want to be very concise, we want to be, we want to make sure that we move in a timely fashion, because I think that our children of Twin Towers deserve to have the same facilities that many of our other schools have. And so, that's what we're working on. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Miss, Miss Blumanow said it best, if we listen, we'll learn. If we listen, we'll learn. And so, I'm going to, I'm going to remain hopeful. Keep me in your prayers, your thoughts, whatever, as I, as I continue to try to heal, but I'm glad that I was able to be here tonight. Thank you. If there's nothing else...
Motion to adjourn? We need to go into a late exec or not?
We, we, we will, we will adjourn into a late exec with just the board, please, just for, just for a few, just the board, some things that we need to, we need to just iron out real quick.
Did the day finish?
Is there, is there, is there anything else? Nothing else I'm missing? Okay. Our next meeting will be held on October 7th. I do want to invite, I do want to invite you, we are going to be moving into the new...
High school media.
High school media center.
So, it will not be here?
It's there. It will not be here. Our meetings from this point on will be held in our new high school media center, and so we welcome you to come and to view it and to see it on October, October the 7th. October the 7th, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn into, to adjourn into exec, to move into exec, we will not be coming back into public.
Um, Pastor?
I'm sorry, sir?
If you'd indulge me 30 seconds first, please?
30 seconds?
Yes, sir.
I, I will.
Okay, I'm saying what I have to say to the board today. All of you guys sat there and listened, and I would just like to say to all of you out there that got up at this microphone and had your four minutes, and had these ladies and gentlemen listen to you, and then walked out the door, that was rude, and that is not how we're going to get results. Do better next time.
Thank you, sir. We had a motion, motion, we're going to adjourn into, we're going to adjourn into exec, and we will not be coming into public. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Pastor, could you just repeat the date of the next meeting, because some people thought you said the 7th, and some people thought you said the 2nd?
It's the 7th of October.
7th.
The 7th of October.
Thank you.
Thank you.